What am I going to do today?
I don't have to do anything.
Okay. Good evening. This meeting of the Board of Education of the Sedalia 200 School District is now called to order at 6:30 PM. The Secretary will call the role of each Board member to determine if a quorum is present. Please respond by saying "here."
Dr. Barth Fagan.
Here.
Mr. Gardner.
Here.
Mr. Groupie.
Here.
Mr. Kimpton.
Here.
Mrs. Moon.
Here.
Ms. Nichols.
Here.
And Ms. Schrader is here.
Thank you. You will now rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Recognitions and presentations. Just the usual reminder, anyone from the audience who would like to address the Board may do so when that agenda item is being discussed. Before you approach the podium, please sign in on the sheet provided at the media table. When it is your turn to speak, as you approach the podium, please provide your name. If you have printed correspondence you want to share with the Board, please leave those items at the media table with Mr. Satin, and he will share those items with Board members at the conclusion of the meeting. Remarks are to be limited to three minutes and one appearance. Questions directed to the Board may not always be answered immediately. All questions will be responded to by an appropriate person as soon as possible. Persons who wish to suggest items for the agenda should contact the Superintendent. Sedalia School District Foundation. And this is Mr. LaCass.
I'm going to sign in first.
Oh, okay. You don't.
I will move on.
Okay.
We followed the rules in my house, so I had to sign in first. My wife would be very angry with me if I did not do that. My name is Matt LaCass. I'm the Vice President of the Sedalia School District Foundation, and I'm pleased to be here this evening addressing the school board. A quick report for everybody. First of all, thanks for allowing me to be here and address you all this evening. We have a new Executive Committee for our foundation. I'm pleased to be the Vice President of that Board, and Brendan Hurley is our new President of our Board. Deidre Eskvell has stepped down as the President of our Board after a long time serving in that capacity, so Brendan and I are pleased to pick up the leadership of the Board and we're moving forward. So, another big news item for our Board is Paula Shoup has announced her retirement after 11 years as the Administrative Assistant, and we are, of course, now looking to hire her replacement. So, really pleased with Paula, obviously, and going to miss her around. If anybody knows of anybody that would like to fill in those very large shoes, we have posted that on LinkedIn and sharing it around Facebook, or you can email Brendan or I, or if you have our phone numbers, please call or text us. We'd love to have that information. Scholarships are now out, and they are due back by February 21st at 4:00 PM, so please get those in. That information is available on our website. I'm happy to answer any other questions that the Board might have. All right. Thank you so much for all you guys knew.
Thank you. And next is NEA. Don't see anyone. Do you see anyone? No. And SCEA contacted me right before the meeting, and they did not have a report for tonight. So, we will now move to the Legion of Valor Bronze Cross of Colonel Sullinger.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Dr. Fraley, thank you for offering us an opportunity to honor Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Mason Cruz, who was recently selected to receive the Legion of Valor Bronze Cross Award for scholastic achievement from 3rd Brigade, U.S. Army's Cadet Command. She is one of 25 cadets across the nation to receive this award. That's out of the Army, Navy, Air Force, and Marine Corps JROTCs, which have almost 500,000 cadets combined. The Legion of Valor Award is voted on annually by a select group of Medal of Honor winners to select and recognize scholastic excellence in military and academic subjects. Cadet Cruz received this award as a result of her stellar self-drive, academic performance, and exceptional leadership ability. She has a weighted GPA of 3.89 and is currently ranked 37th in her class of 350. As a cadet, she joined the program as a freshman. She's in her fourth year, and her leadership was a direct result of her team winning a national championship this past spring. This year, she was selected to serve as the overall drill team commander, as well as the Deputy Commanding Officer in our Corps of Cadets of almost 300. She is also a member of National Honor Society and has been one for three years, and this year was selected to serve as the Vice President. As part of her selfless service, she's accumulated over 400 hours of community service. She plans on attending State Fair Community College and later beginning a career in education or chemistry. She will receive the A-plus Program Scholarship. Thank you for allowing us to do this. Cadet Cruz?
Yeah, don't go too far. The next item on our agenda also honors Mason. The Missouri School Board's Association's John T. Belcher Scholarship is awarded to students in MSBA's member districts. A winner is selected from each of the 17 MSBA regions, and one overall state winner is selected. Each regional winner receives a $1,000 scholarship and is automatically eligible to compete for the statewide winner, who receives an additional $1,500. The school board of each MSBA member district is eligible to nominate one high school senior to apply. We, the Sedalia School District 200 Board of Education and Sedalia School District Foundation, would like to recognize Mason Cruz as the winner of the John T. Belcher Scholarship to represent our district. She will be awarded with a $500 scholarship from the Sedalia School District Foundation in July.
I'm so sorry. I left one thing off my report, but I promise you're going to like it. I left money off of my report. I have a check for you all for the Leave a Legacy Foundation, so I'll leave that over here with Bob, I promise. That's the last thing you'll hear from me tonight. So, again, thank you for all you guys knew. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda is the SMS Robotics Team Roar. And I understand we're going to have some entertainment.
We have been at Sedalia Middle School for several years, have been dabbling in an after-school program for robotics. This year, with the help of Mr. Michael Wright, we were able to become an official Robotics Team. So, I would like to introduce you. This is Team Roar. And, yeah, very proud of them. So, I'm going to add, they've got some things that they want to talk... They're going to talk to you a little bit about. They're going to showcase a couple of our robots. But at this time, I'd like to introduce Ms. Melissa Wisman, Ms. Heather Kessing, and then Ms. Stacy Harrison. These are our three robotics coaches for Sedalia Middle School. It's been really exciting because not only have we built a team here, but we have been in collaboration with the high schools robotics team. So, Mr. Zach Bogart over here has been helping us, as well as some of the other high school robotics team coming to help mentor and kind of help us along the way as we start to blaze these trails. So, without further ado.
Hello there. I am the Team Roar Head Coach, along with my assistant coaches here, and our Team Screen Mentor, Zach. And then this is just a selection of about half of our team. We have 18 students total that are involved. They're in groups of three. We've built a total of six robots, and tonight we're going to be showing you the two robots that qualified to go on to the VEX Elementary Level State Competition here at the end of February. So, we went to Kansas City a couple of weekends ago and competed. We were the only rookie team there out of about 21 teams. We were the only rookie team, and I can just not say enough about the kids and how well they performed, how gracious they were, how many life skills they learned that day of working under pressure. A VEX IQ competition is for one minute, so you get one minute to prove yourself, and the amount of composure that these kids had is by far that of I've seen of some adults. So, they definitely deserve every recognition that they get, so. And then I just want to give a huge thank you. I don't know if Michael Wright did this intentionally when he sent Zach as our mentor, but if you know Zach, or if you don't know Zach, we all should know Zach because he is by far the most amazing mentor that you could ever have. He has been so wonderful for these kids, helping them problem solve, and just being a true representation of what a mentor is, and he's definitely going places, so we're all so super proud of him. All right. I am done talking, so we have some representatives that wanted to speak aloud, and then we've also brought our robots, and we're going to show you kind of some of the coding that they've done and a little bit of a glimpse into what they can do. All right. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. Hello, everybody. I'm Cora Singer, and today I'm going to tell you a little bit about what we did when we first started Team Roar. So, one of the things we did was team building. Part of team building is coming up with our team's mission, values, visions, and goals. Me and my team said that for our mission, we always want to be positive and always play fair. We said that our values are being honest, being helpful, having teamwork, and always having fun. For our vision, we said we would like to advance to build more high-tech robots, and last but not least, for our goals, we wanted to place in the top 10 teams and to try our best at all times. Personally, I learned a lot of skills that I will use a lot in the world. I'm very grateful for the help that our mentor, Zach, has given us. I don't know what we would have done without him. I would also like to give a big thanks to our teachers, Ms. Wisman, Ms. Harrison, and Ms. Kessing, for all the work they did for Team Roar. I have truly learned a lot of valuable lessons throughout Team Roar and made a lot of good memories. Thank you.
Very nice. Thank you. Next. Don't be shy. You can come up together if you want. It might be less intimidating. Okay.
Hi. My name is Cruz Balki. First, I want to thank you for the opportunity to be involved in robotics at such a young age. I learned how to code and build the robot and work together as a team. I learned that measuring and math is important when coding the robot to drive itself on automatic mode. Thank you.
Good job. Nice job.
Hello, everybody. I'm Ariel Lemansky, and today I'm going to be talking about my favorite memory. My favorite memory is when we were building the robot with my team, seeing it just as a little... A bunch of little pieces to a big functioning robot was amazing. Also, getting to go to the competition was a cool experience.
Thank you. Are they coming up here? Okay, good. All right. Coming up on stage, we have Tyler and Josie, whose Clawbot B is one of the ones going to state competition. We also have Riley down here from that team. And then we also have Cora and Caitlin, representing their Swish robot.
So, this is the Clawbot. Its most important part about it is the arm and the claw itself. That's how you can pass the ball, pick it up, shoot it. It's main part. And we're going to give you a little demonstration of it.
Okay.
So, this opens and closes off, and then brings it out, lowers it. This one brings it forward, downwards, and then it just turns it. That's brilliant.
Okay. That's a lot. Nice job. That is a lot. Yay, Dave.
This is a Swish robot. Its most important parts are the right gears and the lever to shoot the ball into the targets, and then the front part just takes the gold ball onto the lever. Now, we're going to show you some examples.
Very nice. Very good. I think that's it from the kids. Just one final statement, and I kind of shared this at our last meeting last week, is that in education, a lot of us get asked every day, remember your why, or what is your why? Why we became teachers? Why we come to work every day? And I just wholeheartedly believe that these kids, plus the others that are not here in Team Roar, are just there my why. They have made it through every day and just shown such perseverance that in such a short amount of time... I mean, October, we got briefcase-style kits, and now look at them. And it's just truly amazing, and we don't always get to see that in such a short span. So, it's all for them. That's it. Thank you so, so much, and thank you to the sponsors. The mentor from the high school, and you students are absolutely amazing.
Thank you, guys. Great job.
I will now ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
And do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The consented agenda items 4.1 to 4.6, do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Consent to agenda item 4.7, payment of bills with Mr. Kimpton abstaining, do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor, say nay. Thank you. Next is Decision Unfinished Business. Dr. Fraley, the school day start and end times.
Yeah. Before I do that, I just want to point out real quick that what you just saw is, should be, the people on the stage, that should be your why as well.
Definitely. Good point.
The things that you support as the school board, being open-minded to new programs, like bringing robotics all the way down to the lowest levels, even kindergarten, and things like that make a huge impact for life. So, thank you for being supportive of that, and that is your why. Now, schools start day and end times. Regretfully, I really wanted to make a change. I tried very, very hard to make a change. It's just a matter of logistics and the size and scope of our school district. So many dominos and consequences that fall with changing things around even a few minutes. Like, for example, our high school CTC programs, our dual-credit enrollment programs. So, I do think it would be best for us to push things back just a little bit for safety in the mornings, but I don't know that that necessarily outweighs all the disruption that it would cause. So, I personally, I'm going to recommend that we continue with the same schedule that we've had until we see some type of major shift. But when you're in a district where you have three separate distinct bus routes that have to be met, and a growing community where those bus routes continue to take more and more time to get completed, it just makes it very, very difficult. Some folks will wonder, well, why don't you just, you know, double the bus fleet? Well, doubling the bus fleet to accomplish that goal is a grand idea, is a very, very expensive idea, not that it necessarily couldn't be afforded, but it is a huge... It would be a huge one-time expense, provided you could purchase that many school buses at once. And in addition to that, you have to find a place to park those buses. You have to have a bus lot and maintenance center equipped to do so, and then you have to find bus drivers to drive those buses, which is hard enough to do as it is. So, I would be recommending that the Board, that we continue with our current configuration of times, with the exception of the Loftus Early Childhood Center, which I'll work with Mr. Sherman in adjusting those times. He has made a suggestion that we start about 10 minutes early. At the Loftus could alleviate the traffic congestion that we have with the start time with the high school, and right now it conflicts.
Are there any questions for Dr. Fraley? If not, do I hear a motion to approve no changes to school day start and end times for the 2025-2026 school year as presented?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor, say nay. And that...
That would go to the City Council for their approval.
Next. Okay. Thank you. Next is Mr. Middleton.
He's at the ballgame. Yeah. I think I spoke to this last month in December as well, so I'll follow that up. Just reminding the Board that we discussed the additional track coach position for this spring, allowing for some more specialized instruction that could take place with, in particular, our throwers, as that program is expanding and more opportunities of events are included. They're looking for some more instructional support there.
Are there any questions for Mr. Curry? If not, I will ask for a motion to approve adding an assistant track coach position as presented.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor, say nay. And that is approved unanimously. Thank you. And Mr. Curry, again, on the summative evaluation report for support staff?
Yes. We presented this again last month in December as well, just very minor changes to this evaluation form that were somewhat redundant, so we wanted to eliminate those and kind of streamline this process for everyone involved, our staff and our admin that are doing these evaluations.
Are there any questions for Mr. Curry? If not, do I hear a motion to approve the summative evaluation report for support staff as presented?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor, say nay. And that...
That would go to the City Council for their approval.
Next. Okay. Thank you. Next is Mr. Middleton.
He's at the ballgame.
He's at the ballgame.
Yeah. I think I spoke to this last month in December as well, so I'll follow that up. Just reminding the Board that we discussed the additional track coach position for this spring, allowing for some more specialized instruction that could take place with, in particular, our throwers, as that program is expanding and more opportunities of events are included. They're looking for some more instructional support there.
Are there any questions for Mr. Curry? If not, I will ask for a motion to approve adding an assistant track coach position as presented.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor, say nay. And that is approved unanimously. Thank you. And Mr. Curry, again, on the summative evaluation report for support staff?
Yes. We presented this again last month in December as well, just very minor changes to this evaluation form that were somewhat redundant, so we wanted to eliminate those and kind of streamline this process for everyone involved, our staff and our admin that are doing these evaluations.
Are there any questions for Mr. Curry? If not, do I hear a motion to approve the summative evaluation report for support staff as presented?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor, say nay. And that stands approved unanimously. Thank you. Dr. Fraley, the speed, agility, and strength training?
Yes. This was discussed at a previous meeting for trying to add additional types of training and assessment to our athletic activities programs. The equipment needed to do such has an estimated between $150,000 and $165,000 for that equipment. The bulk of that is professional treadmills that cost up to $19,500 each. I'll make it known that those treadmills are commercial-grade quality. Their lifespan is usually 20 to 30 years. We'd like to be able to approve this specialized conditioning equipment for athletic training and assessment as it's presented, and then also, in addition to that, to be able to go forth and negotiate a possible contract for this specialized assessment training with SWAG Performance out of Warrensburg to offer potential before-school sessions for up to 40 participants per session and four sessions per calendar year. If those negotiations, we, of course, bring that back to the Board for final approval. In addition to that, Mr. Norton...
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay. And that-
That would go to the city council for their approval.
Next, okay, thank you. Next is Mr. Middleton.
He's at the ballgame.
He's at the ballgame.
I think I spoke to this last month in December as well, so I'll follow that up. Just reminding the board that we discussed the additional track coach position for this spring, allowing for some more specialized instruction that could take place with, in particular, our throwers. As that program is expanding and more opportunities of events are included, they're looking for some more instructional support there.
Are there any questions for Mr. Curry? If not, I will ask for a motion to approve adding an assistant track coach position as presented.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay. And that is approved unanimously, thank you. And Mr. Curry, again, on the summative evaluation report for support staff?
Yes, we presented this again last month in December as well, just very minor changes to this evaluation form that were somewhat redundant, so we wanted to eliminate those and kind of streamline this process for our, for everyone involved, our staff and our admin that are doing these evaluations.
Are there any questions for Mr. Curry? If not, do I hear a motion to approve the summative evaluation report for support staff as presented?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay. And that stands approved unanimously, thank you. Dr. Fraley, the speed, agility, and strength training?
Yes, this was discussed at a previous meeting for trying to add additional types of training and assessment to our athletic activities programs. The equipment needed to do such has an estimated between a hundred and fifty and a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars for that equipment. The bulk of that is professional treadmills, that cost up to nineteen thousand five hundred each. Make it known that those treadmills are commercial grade quality, their lifespan is usually twenty to thirty years. We'd like to be able to approve this specialized conditioning equipment for athletic training and assessment as it's presented, and then also, in addition to that, to be able to go forth and negotiate a possible contract for this specialized assessment training with SWAG Performance out of Warrensburg, to offer potential before-school sessions for up to forty participants per session and four sessions per calendar year. If those negotiations, we, of course, bring that back to the board for final approval. In addition to that, Mr. Norton has been working with Mr. Middleton and the PE department to look at how we can change athletic conditioning. That program has been kind of the same for the last thirty years or so, would that be kind of correct, Mr. Norton?
Yes.
So, they, Mr. Gray and Mr. Thomas have kind of created a, a potential program, kind of idea of how we might shake things up in that arena. So, this, this would help us step in that direct direction to give our student athletes the very best opportunity to succeed.
Are there any questions for Dr. Fraley? If not, I will ask for a motion to approve specialized conditioning for district athletes' training and assessment program as presented.
So moved.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay. Okay, that is approved. The next item is the Smith Cotton Junior High School Course and Student Resource Guide, Mrs. Nolan?
Good evening, were there any questions I could answer about our course guide for next year?
Any questions? Nope, okay, I will go ahead and ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
And do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay. Thank you. Items for decision, Dr. Fraley, the annual board of education election.
Yes, item six point one, the board is required to pass a notice of election that you will find attached. It's something that will be advertised, we will have an election on Tuesday, April eighth of this year, and it will be for two members of the Board of Education to serve for a term of three years each. There are three candidates right now, Barbara Jean Schrader, Diana Nichols, and Kyle Garber. So I'm asking that the board would approve that so we can get that advertised?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, wait a minute, we have to have a roll call vote, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
Okay, Dr. Barth Fagan?
Here.
Mr. Groupie?
Aye.
Mr. Gardner?
Aye.
Mr. Kimpton?
Aye.
Mrs. Moon?
Aye.
Ms. Nichols?
Aye.
Mr. Schrader votes aye.
Thank you. And next is the board meeting schedule for a few meetings that might need to be changed, Dr. Fraley?
Yeah, we need to have a little discussion. Part of what's happened is we're sending through our board members to some professional development with instruction, and they will be out, all three will be out of town and traveling the friendly skies during the February twenty-fourth board meeting. We scheduled that PD, I don't think we looked far enough ahead on the calendar, but it's a conflict. So, I'm going to recommend that we, we need to change this meeting schedule. In addition to that, we have a conflict with April seventh. Since we're going to have an election on April eighth, we need to have a reorganization meeting within, I think, twenty days? Am I right, Ms. Hamerly?
It's like ten.
Ten days, and that's, so, we're suggesting that, one, the February twen- twenty-fourth board meeting, where we have the conflict with our board members being out of town, be moved to March third of this calendar year. And we are also requesting an additional board meeting for March thirty-first of this calendar year to assist with district administration, the evaluation process of teachers, and additional hiring that happens, and it's very busy this time of year. And then move the board meeting schedule for April seventh to April fourteenth to accommodate the election cycle.
Are there any questions or comments or anything for Dr. Fraley on this? We're all good with those dates?
We'll make it work.
Yeah, look, real quick. Okay, then I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the attached revised board meeting schedule for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five year as presented.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay. And that stands approved unanimously. Next is Mrs., Ms. Guarini, with some Whittier High School donations that were received.
We had a lot of generous donations in December. Very, very generous donations.
And they're always appreciated, yes.
Made Christmas and holiday break a lot better and warmer.
So you, you have, this is how I say it publicly, we have Boulevard Hair Company.
They donated blankets or pajama pants to every student.
And the Christmas gifts to students came from First United Methodist Church, Calvary Episcopal Church, RCL, which is-
RCL Electric Supply Company.
Okay, the Moose Lodge, Pruitt Insurance, and the Sedalia Hair Company, correct?
And all of them together donated a gift, at least one gift, to every student, night school and day school.
That's awesome.
That is very cool.
Very much appreciated.
Very much.
Generous folks.
Thank you, and do I have a motion to approve the Whittier High School donations as presented?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay. Thank you. And Dr. Fraley, the trademark and copyright?
Yeah, this is, uh, you turned your memory banks back quite, quite a few months. We submitted with our rebranding process, we had our legal team start working on the trademark copyright process. I finally heard back from our legal team, and these are the service mark applications to continue that process that will authorize our legal counsel at Toot Keeny to go ahead and submit these to the government.
Are there any questions for Dr. Fraley?
Move its approval.
Very good, and I need a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay. And that stands approved unanimously. And Mr. Pyle, the PCE construction change orders?
Yes, the progress is happening, doing, doing good work with PCE and Hollison Miller on the current gym renovation project and Sade Middle School remodel. As we meet weekly with, with both those teams that I mentioned, we, we look at progress and, and look at plans, and we've identified that within those original plans, some improvements that should have been made that we probably should have noticed the first time as we looked through them. So tonight I bring five change orders enlisted in the packet for our Board of Education for consideration to accept these for the Sade Middle School and Smith Cotton Junior High. Change orders noted, Smith Cotton Junior High, we would like to add a gym divider curtain. It'll go across the center court, provide extra safety, just be a nice thing during normal PE classes and be a nice addition there. Change order number three, so that was change order number two at the junior high. Change order number three would be the Sade Middle School basement utility sink, that's something that we would like to add. Number four is also at Sade Middle School, we, we need to add lockers to that south wing, which is the former co-op wing before. And then the fifth change order is the Sade Middle School, remove paneling and hang new sheet rock in those areas where they're doing lights and, and working in that area. Once they begin the work, some of that paneling that they thought could be removed will not, not remove and have a nice finish on the back, so, we'd like to come back in, in that order to, to make it a nicer finish. Is my recommendation to accept these change orders, number two through five, for the Sade Middle School and Smith Cotton Junior High, the total of these change orders is one hundred and seventy-two thousand one hundred and seven and ten cents.
Are there any questions for Mr. Pyle?
The gym curtain divider, they still play murder ball at the junior high?
We call it fitness ball now.
Ah.
Fast movers, fast movers.
Okay, all right, I'll move the-
So did we, did we take, it's been a while since I've been in the south wing of the middle school, it was sixth grade, I think the last time I was there. Did we take those existing lockers out when we moved it to, when we made it to co-op area? Or are these, are these additional lockers that we need for the incoming fourth grade?
These would be new ones to replace those existing, we didn't remove those before, Mr. Kimpton. So, they would go back in the same area, but would be newer, new lockers, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve PCE construction change orders two through five for an additional one hundred and seventy-two thousand one oh seven point ten.
And do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not, I, I'll not in favor say nay. Who was, who's second did that?
Me, I did.
Oh, okay, all right, thank you. So that was unanimously approved. And the summer school dates, Ms. Brownfield? Okay. Saying summer school sounds warm.
That does sound warm. You have before you the list of proposed summer school dates, and with one minor change for secondary, wanted to include some options for high school to do some additional enrichment course offerings, so that is added there, and then did you have a change for elementary?
Any questions for Ms. Brownfield or Ms. Gilmore? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the summer school dates as presented.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And all not in favor say nay.
Very good, thanks.
Mr. Curry, staffing for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six school year?
Yes, as we've made it through first semester and got into January, you all have been hearing our enrollment numbers since the fall, and I think the board's well aware that we're up about roughly a hundred and thirty students from last school year to this school year, and we've, you know, we typically have some transition of students between the fall and the spring semester, but in January, after we got back in session finally, we pulled some reports and looked at numbers, and they're still holding strong, we have not dropped, we've not decreased. And so, as we look forward to next school year, we've got to look and identify needs that we have. And Ms. Paner at Horseman and Ms. McFatrich at Skyline have both had larger class sizes this school year and have made it through, but it's not ideal by any means. And as we look at the transition of fourth grade over to the middle school for next year, their larger class sizes are still in the younger grade levels, kindergarten, first and second grade. So, identified the need again for additional teaching staff. A third grade teacher at Skyline and was a third grade teacher at Horseman for next year still exist right now currently. Also, within that, you know, numbers at the secondary level are up quite a bit as well. Being able to service all those students becomes the need, as well as with the expansion of our CAPS program and continuing to move in that direction and support that program. The need for a digital arts and technology teacher, and then an additional teacher within the physical education department will allow us to provide opportunities for all those students.
Are there any questions for Mr. Curry? If not, I will ask for a motion to approve staffing for twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six school year as presented.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay. And next under decision is Mr. Wright and the enhancement grant application.
Good evening, everyone, it is time to submit our annual enhancement grant in February, which you have before you as a budget request, so that we can submit the application at the end of February. Enhancement grant is provided to allow districts to purchase additional instructional equipment and being reimbursed anywhere from fifty to seventy-five percent of what we spend on that. What we are applying for this year with the enhancement grant and multiple programs, we have some CPR mannequins, some biomedical classroom kits, some classroom computers and workstations, some embroidery machines, some large format printers, some software, and some kitchen aid mixers for our fax departments. So which, again, what you have before you is, is the budget request, we would like to ask for permission to submit the grant in February. Do you have any questions on any of the items or purchasing, be glad to answer those.
Any questions, comments, thoughts for Mr. Wright? If not, I will ask for a motion to approve the enhancement grant application as presented.
So moved.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay. Very good, thank you, Mr. Wright. And now we move to items under discussion, Dr. Fraley, the calendar options.
Yeah, the administrative team had worked up a couple of different calendar options to look at for the following school year, keep in mind, we're quite restricted. Sedalia Two Hundred is a little bit unique in that we have the state fair in town. So, we legally certainly could start when the state fair is going on, but that would be very, very, very unpopular, especially the state fair that requires our students and staff basically to, to function. So, that, that limits our number of days, especially if we have a goal of getting out around Memorial Day weekend without going past that end of June. So, we created a couple of different versions, of course, we have to have a thousand and forty-four student hours on our schedule per state rule, if we want to be paid, we have to have a hundred thousand forty-four hours. And both calendars have a thousand ninety-three student hours, a hundred and eighty-four thirty-five days. As you'll see, the, really the largest discrepancy is a week-long spring break in March versus a five-day weekend in March, and then another five-day weekend over Easter break. Largely, they're, they're very similar. What we'd like to do after discussion is take this to the staff for some additional feedback.
Anybody have any comments or questions, this will be brought back at the March third meeting to be finalized? Okay, thank you. Uh, Dr. Fraley, the wrestling fitness room?
Yeah, I mentioned the last time, I kind of want to continue that conversation a little bit. So, it's been no secret, of course, that our wrestling program needs a much-needed practice space. It'd be nice to have that here on Smith Cotton campus. I asked permission to kind of go and investigate potential steel practice building for that purpose that could also, and would be a multipurpose area for additional programs like the speed and agility training, dance cheer, et cetera. In addition to that, we, we have a growing problem here in Sedalia Two Hundred with our programs. That was mentioned a little bit earlier, just like our robotics teams. That, that, these are good problems to have, but sometimes we have to figure out the space to have them in. We talked to Mr. Fisher, the band director, today. They've got over seventy eighth graders in band right now, potentially, you know, dozens of them over here next year. There's, that band room is, is losing space as well, I mean, it's not losing space, but-
Getting crowded.
We don't have enough space. Same with the vocal music room. So I think when this building was designed, it was kind of designed for about twelve hundred kids at that time, and now we're pushing towards sixteen hundred kids, that's quite a difference. That's, in the state of Missouri, four hundred kids is, is a school district in many cases. So, I just kind of want to know the, if the board is open to working with our architect firm and having them come in and present some additional options, looking at the building, seeing if there's a way maybe to expand or to add on in the best feasible way possible.
I personally feel that if we have students that- I personally feel that if we have students that are interested in these programs and the numbers are continuing to increase, that, that's what we're here for, is for the students. And, um, I would, I would be all in favor of it. I know this is just up for discussion tonight, but, um, I definitely, I think it's a great problem to have right now. Anybody else?
If we've got the space and we've got the money and the need, we need to continue to look at it.
Agree.
I know personally myself, working with, being in charge of tempo and working with the music department, that band room is already too small. I don't know what's gonna happen next year when our big group of 8th graders come up. I believe there's right at a, maybe 100 6th graders. And I know they've already been, been asking 5th graders what they wanna play next year, 'cause my granddaughter's come home with a form. So, it's gonna continue to grow. So like Mr. Groupie said, if we have the money and we, and we can do it, we should do what we can to make it the best for the kids.
Anybody else? Okay. I think that was a go-ahead. Uh, Mr. Pyle, the additional equipment for snow removal?
Yes, uh, a snowstorm that hit us after Christmas break that kinda extended that break was a challenge for our team, but we wanna say thanks to those guys. Special thanks to Richie Simons, Tony Neff, and the entire custodial crew as well, maintenance team for doing a good job removing the snow. And, and with that ice that come before it, it was an extra challenge this year. So we appreciate the time they spent. After the storm, we met as a group, uh, Dr. Fraley, Richie Simons, Tony Neff and I, and, and talked about just some different things, how we can be prepared if that, something like that would hit again, and then looked at what we're doing now and how we can improve on the process for the future, just in, in other snowstorms and storms that have ice like that. So, it come down to that we need to, uh, increase our efficiency and, and provide this removal in a safer, safer fashion if we can. And it, and it come back to considering equipment that would help us. So currently, right now, i- if we would look to tomorrow, our custodial teams have to hit the ground with s- snow shovels and different things. They help on sidewalks. Our maintenance team tries to take care of the lots with trucks and things like that. So, what I'm asking for is to, just to talk on tonight for future consideration is to add two additional UTVs, the utility task vehicles equipped with push blades and salt spreaders, which would help push the walks instead of so much shoveling at other locations. Uh, we would like to get two utility trailers to assist with transport and storage, uh, of these vehicles, so we could then move them back to a, to our maintenance facility where we could store these UTVs, if we're able to do that. We'd like to also consider getting a dump truck with a plow attachment to address the larger areas. Smithcotton High School alone, uh, with the parking areas and things would be one place that would be very helpful. As I mentioned, just help us work in a safer manner. And we, and we, when we visited about this, we talked about maybe backing off some of the expectations for custodial, making their work a little bit more minimal, where they would help just certain areas. But our maintenance team, we would develop teams within our maintenance, uh, to, to actually take those vehicles around and, and improve this process. Like to bring this back to the board at a future meeting, if this is something we could pursue.
I, I absolutely respect the fact that a lot of our maintenance staff is oftentimes here working when we don't see them and has those extra-duty responsibilities when there are major snowfalls, but we don't get a lot of them. So, I, I'm all for you exploring this. Obviously, we don't know what the price is gonna be. I can envision what a dump truck would cost, even if it's used. There, we gotta be able to utilize this equipment that we are contemplating, exploring and purchasing for other reasons other than snow removal, right?
Right.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah, there's gravel and different things too that would help us. We, different things through the school year with some of our gravel lots and things too. But, uh, I appreciate the comment, but yes, we, we would incorporate it for other reasons too, so.
I, I don't know if you want to even consider this, but on the dump truck with a plow attachment, uh...
Hey Scott, would you move into your microphone?
I was, I was moving up for this, but for the dump truck with a plow attachment, would there be any reason that we couldn't either borrow one from the city or lend them ours, um, at some rate to, uh, you know, with the driver or without, to, uh, and using their gasoline to, or diesel to move stuff around once the school area got cleaned up?
I appreciate that comment as well and think it's a good consideration, good discussion. I know Dr. Fraley, I think, was even approached by, by, uh, the city at one point to see about, they were, were they limited somewhat, Dr. Fraley, this year? And even asked for maybe some support from our team at, just on certain areas?
Yeah, I don't wanna speak, speak too much on, I, I don't, I think they had their own equipment woes, uh, that they're gonna have to address. Uh, I do know that they, I've had discussions that we could, uh, start buying salt through them though, which could help us financially, uh, and do bulk. We, right now, we, we still buy bags of salt. So, we're loading those spreaders from the back of pickups with bags of salt. Big thing with that, we buy bulked salt as we need of a place that's covered to store it, obviously. So it doesn't melt or, you know, dissipate. So, need dry storage for that. That doesn't take a lot, uh, but if we had that and had a bin, uh, and we could run, you know, the skid steers could, could fill those, those spreaders up a whole lot easier.
And I mentioned that, uh, 'cause we have been in conversation and Dr. Fraley's got a great relationship with them as far as trying to team up when we can. But, uh, some of that, depending on what, how much coverage we can provide.
Okay. Any other comments or questions for Mr. Pyle? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And next, Mr. Pyle, you again with the generator installation.
Yes, uh, I wanted to visit with the board tonight about an opportunity to see if we could seek proposals from qualified and experienced contractors for general, generator insta- installation, excuse me, at our schools that do not have a current backup power option at this time, in case of emergency outage. Uh, the snowstorm was another, um, thing that brought this to light in some different, uh, days here recently, where we were having power shortages at our central office, even when we first returned. So, uh, the goal of the project would just be to assure, ensure that we had essential power. And we're not talking about, uh, running the whole buildings or, if these buildings or anything like that. Uh, our ground source heat pump system and cooling system, it's essential that we could be able to run the, the pump at times, uh, would help that. I know that's one thing that Richie definitely loses sleep over in our maintenance team, checking those things, if the power would ever go down often. Uh, we'd wanna run certain lighting and, and the communication systems to a point. Just wanted to bring this to the board as a, as an opportunity to visit tonight and see if we could bring this back after we seek out an RFP.
Yeah.
One of the things is further, you know, at Washington during that, the, our storm and cold snap, uh, our maintenance crew talked about the extra things that they do. Mr. Kimpton mentioned, uh, they're basically there for almost an entire day around the clock because the power kept off and on, off and on. We had below zero temps, near zero temps. Uh, if the water doesn't circulate inside those ground source systems and it freezes, we're looking at massive expense if that's the bust in any way, shape or form. So, that, the, uh, the generators, if we'd had that at Washington at the time, they would've been able to kick on and, uh, and keep that water circulating through the system. So it goes back into the ground and back up through, uh, keep it from freezing. That, that's, that's the largest concern.
Currently, we, the, the options we have now are Smithcotton High School, the junior high, the FEMA and our central office. So we'll be looking at 8 other locations in this RFP.
When you do that, would you, you know, I'm...
Microphone.
Okay. I'm assuming that these are gonna be natural gas-fired generators, correct?
We have looked, kinda looked on and studied so far over what we've learned and, um, that, that is an option. We've, it, it keeps pointing back to our team that diesel power is, is the way to go still with a generator, uh, far as efficiency guaranteed to fire and different things. So we, we thought through the RFP that we would seek out these professionals that could provide guidance, Mr. Gardner, but we would have that as an option.
Would there ever be any consideration for a power pack? Basically, a large battery installation? That you could have a days, a day or two worth of battery power on tap instead of a generator?
I think we could learn from this RFP and, and see if they come back with something like that for them to come back again, further discuss.
All I ask is that you be open to things like that.
I think so. I appreciate that.
Okay.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Pyle? Thank you, Mr. Pyle. Um, oh, you're not done yet. The additional concrete pad at Smithcotton High School?
Yes, so, this is, this is, uh, currently McCollister is working here with concrete, so this is how this come about for our Board of Education to, to be in the know on this. The district, uh, is interested with them working here and things. So we visited about a concrete pad, additional concrete pad, and got to visiting about, well, this possibility would be why they were here. So just wanna be upfront with why we had spoke to them originally. So a 50 by 50 concrete pad to the southwest corner out at our soccer complex, the, the new soccer stadium. So that's where we considered putting this pad. Uh, the goal of that pad would be a starting point for future consideration and visiting about adding a maintenance shed back there for that area for, would help us move some of our equipment that is, uh, that we use for keeping the grounds and things here. And, um, so that would be the area that we would like to discuss and see if we could, um, while they're here working, talk to them further about maybe moving forward with this. We could bring this back at the, at the next month meeting for a decision, if, if so. Their bid came in at $49,980, which is under the threshold where we would have to seek this out to, to seek other bidders, so.
Okay.
Uh, they were here working. It was just an opportunity for, for a goal that was gonna be in our plan for the future. So we visited and come back where we thought way that's worth taking to the Board of Education.
That, that particular location we chose refers proximity to the current concession stand, uh, and access to utilities in that particular area. That essentially located for the, the turf, uh, grooming equipment that has to be stored there and machine, of course, uh, with the, all the ball fields that'll need tended to.
Any questions for Mr. Pyle? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to information. Mr. Curry?
Yes, um, we brought this, or I had brought this, uh, Regulation 4130 back in December to the board meeting for some discussion. Uh, just reminding the board about this proposed language that was provided to us by our legal counsel and adding to our probationary staff contracts, just making sure that our probationary staff understand that there might be some extracurricular duties that are tied to their teaching position. So, uh, this will be the, again, the recommended language that we'll add to this regulation moving forward.
Any questions for Mr. Curry? And the health insurance renewal update, Mr. Curry?
Uh, yes, this is not as positive of an update this month. We've met a few weeks back with our, uh, broker team from Holmes Murphy, who had been in initial discussions with our, uh, renewal from Blue Cross Blue Shield. They are able to track our progress of the way our plan is running, uh, from the start date. And so, they have kept us informed and updated as we've moved through this about where we were currently running and what the expected renewal may end up being. So you can see from last month's memo, uh, we were expected are running at a, a rate, according to their algorithm, of, of a 13.8% renewal. Put that, putting that into perspective, uh, every percentage point of increase runs around $100,000 of an increase to our expected, uh, healthcare costs. So, right now, what, uh, Blue Cross Blue Shield has released to Holmes Murphy would indicate an 11% rate increase, which is roughly, again, over a million dollars, 1.1 in the area of that. So, um, what they did offer to our broker firm was, uh, the proposal of a restricted or what they call a, um, narrowed market, uh, for our coverage, which is something that we are not particularly interested in. This narrowed market of coverage would restrict our access to our local providers and essentially make our closest provider, uh, Warrensburg, which to us is not acceptable for our staff and, and all of our employees. So, uh, we have instructed our team to go ahead and go out and seek all of our opportunities within the market and then bringing those back to us that we will, of course, bring back to the board at every future meeting until we make a decision on the direction that we go.
Any questions for Mr. Curry?
So when you say that they, you, you, you've asked them to go out and look, you're looking at possibly somebody besides Blue Cross Blue Shield?
Yes, we're gonna look at, um, essentially look at unbundled opportunities where we can provide, get, uh, healthcare coverage as well, um, through an independent and then use a separate, uh, pharmacy, um, a PBM. So, a pharmacy manager, um, which would, uh, there are opportunities, according to our broking team, there are opportunities that we can still have a good network coverage that was like what we have. But then, we know that what really drives a good portion of our cost is the pharmacy. And so if we can go out and unbundle what we currently have and get a better rate on our pharmacy and get better options at lower costs through a different pharmacy option, that's how they're, um, hoping that we can keep this from being a large increase like this 11% that we're looking at. And it could very well be that we'll be in a self-funded platform where, you know, we're again covering all of these with our reinsurance and our stop-loss are covered by the district. So, there's a little bit of a risk there, but, uh, it is what we can control to help keep our costs at a minimal rate.
Any other questions for Mr. Curry?
I noticed when I'm up in Kent, in the Lee Summit area, that they, that, uh, my Texas Roadhouse is a Spire clinic. And I believe that's kind of an in-house thing of, of, uh, of Blue Cross and Blue Shield. Hopefully, they don't have any interest in doing that, since just about every doctor around here is a Bothwell doctor. But have they mentioned that at all?
No, I've not been told anything about that.
Any other comments, questions? Thank you, Mr. Curry. Next is the Queen City CAPS program update, Mr. Wright.
Hello again, everybody?
Hello.
We wanted to come before you tonight and give you an update on our Queen City CAPS program. Uh, this is our first year of running the program and we just finished up our first semester with a new program, new students, new host sites, a lot of cool and exciting new things. Uh, I have our CAPS team here. We have Ms. Anna Singer is our medicine and healthcare instructor. We have Amanda Harvey is our engineering and manufacturing instructor. Mr. Gavin Jones is our business entrepreneurship instructor. Ms. Mindy Gray is our digital media and technology instructor. And then we have a couple of CAPS students who are here tonight to discuss their experience for the year. And then we have one of our host site partners and business partners, Ms. Megan Hartman, president of Callis, here tonight. So thank you all for coming and joining us. You know, we started the, the CAPS program, uh, a couple, the conversation a couple of years ago. We, we built it out, we did a lot of research and this is our, this is our first year of running it. And we started this program to help students identify their purpose and to strengthen our community. And I think we've had a, uh, fantastic first semester. We've had, I'm sure, positive things. We've had some growing pains. We've learned a lot. And, uh, I know we have a team of instructors, partners and students who are excited about the program and are always looking to continuously improve what we do to make this the best opportunity for our, for our students and our, and our community. Uh, what you have before you is a summary of our first semester, uh, some of the highlights, some of our goals. We can discuss some of those as well. And just want you to know that this is a summary of our first semester. We intend to come back towards the end of the school year, after the school year concludes and provide more data, uh, some feedback surveys from our, from our students and staff. from our, from our students and staff and partners and community to get more hard numbers of what we're experiencing. So I would like to introduce two of our students to give a brief overview of their experience in CAPS. We have Ms. Brylee Kendrick and Lincoln Keel are here. If you guys want to come up and introduce yourselves and talk.
Okay. Hello, everybody. I'm Brylee Kendrick, and I'm with the Medicine and Healthcare Strand. First, I would like to thank all of the CAPS instructors for choosing me to, me and Lincoln to represent CAPS tonight. I'm here to talk about some successes and struggles that I have faced personally during CAPS this year. One of the struggles that I have faced was the grading scales. It's definitely hard going from traditional letter grades to going to a four-point scale. It was a little frustrating at first just because all the instructors kind of had different ways to explain things. But I think it would be helpful for the next coming school year for everyone, for the CAPS instructors and students to kind of have a meeting to go over the scales. I feel like some of the students would find that very helpful. On the other hand, I have had a lot of positive outcome from CAPS this year. This program has brought me numerous joys and successes. One of the highlights has been the opportunity to explore different departments in the hospital, which has been incredibly valuable for my career exploration. For example, I've seen childbirth, C-section, and also I never thought I would be able to experience on high school, which I am very privileged. Another exciting aspect is projects. So my passion project, I'm working on a 5K for mental health. This project is a huge inspiration because mental health is something I'm very passionate about. I'd like to express my gratitude for opportunities that CAPS has provided me. It's not just about academic growth, but about experiencing real-world things and making connections with other people to increase my healthcare, my healthcare journey. From shadowing professionals to hands-on experience, I feel more prepared and excited for the next steps in my journey. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Lincoln Keel. I'm an engineering and manufacturing CAPS student. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. CAPS has definitely changed my perspective and view on the future of schooling. Thanks to just two to three hours of engineering, learning, and career exploration, I don't dread waking up every morning and have to force myself to get out of bed. CAPS has helped me develop new skills and meet new people. But what I really value about this program is being treated like an adult. My whole life, I feel as if I've been treated as a kid and hated it. I've had my handheld through every assignment and challenge. But with CAPS, I make my own schedule and I handle my own success. Multiple times, I've gone places and met people that I never thought I'd have the opportunity to. Although the people I've met have been amazing through CAPS, what I really like is my peers, instructors. This year, I made a really dumb split-second decision, and when I came back to CAPS, I wasn't looked down upon, down upon, or treated any differently. And I really value that positive environment. Although I make CAPS sound pretty amazing, there's been struggles with projects, scales, and communication that have me and many other students aggravated or stressed. For example, Francisco and I were tasked to take hundreds of 2D files from Maxion and redesign and organize them in a 3D software. There were struggles with technology and communication, and it was definitely frustrating. CAPS helped me realize that this was just part of my future career. Overall, I'm grateful for the people I've met and the opportunities I've been given through CAPS. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Now, allow Megan to give a perspective from a host site and partner.
Hello. We have the Digital Strand at Callis a couple of days a week, and, you know, we wanted to be a part of this program as soon as I met with Mr. Wright, actually before it even launched, because this is an opportunity to keep our students here. So we looked at it as an opportunity for them to be out in the real world and exactly what these two associates just talked about, treated like adults, figure out what they want to do, and then hopefully come back here and work in our profession. So we've had a lot of great conversations with the associates. I've seen them grow in just the first semester, the first half of the year. And you see the pride in their projects that they're working on. I met with a student today and talking about a project that they're working on for the agency to develop a dashboard from scratch. And he gets to do whatever he wants to do as long as he get the result I want. And him talking about the projects that he has been able to do so far, and him seeing the, the companies actually using his work and that excitement is great and why we support the program. But ultimately, it's an opportunity for these students to really get a feel for the, the workforce and experience what Sudea has to offer and really take control of their own, their own education. The traditional setting isn't perfect for everyone, so this is an opportunity to, to help everyone thrive. So we're excited to be a part of it.
Thank you.
So we've got a lot of really good things going on that we're excited about. I want to take the time to, to say thank you to you all for, for, you know, trusting us to get this program going. We're looking forward to many, many years of success with the CAPS program and turning this into just a transformative program for our school, our students, and our community. We've got a lot of goals for, for moving ahead. Some of our most prominent goals right now is enrollment is coming up soon, and we want to max out our capacity for next year. We're looking at expanding programs. We're looking at increasing our, you know, partnerships that we've got. And so I really just like to provide an opportunity to answer any questions, either by myself or from our, from our team that are gathered here with the information in your packet. So if you've got any questions, please go ahead.
Anybody have any questions?
You know, we've had, we've even had some of the, some people from the CAPS program asking the board questions. I don't think that that's improper. I would, as part of the overall program, you need to go, each of the areas needs to go into when is it appropriate to ask questions and, if necessary, bypass the chain of command. It's very different when you're asking a general policy question or when you're in a healthcare field and you haven't gotten an answer stat from the doctor that you're supposed to be dealing with while the patient is crashing. But you, you need to, if you would work with people on when to ask appropriate questions and, and if need be, bypassing some people. Nothing wrong with what's happened. It, just a, people aren't used to this, and, and they need, they need some guidance on it.
Agreed.
How many kids are a part of the program?
Uh, right now, we're just around, around eighty students right now.
What do you feel like is your max?
Uh, with current, current capacity is 112, based on our current status. We're, we're looking to go to about 130 next year by offering our, right now, our digital media and technology is only offered in the afternoon, and so we'll be able to increase that by another 15 students next semester. You know, as we add, as we add more strands, because there's more strands, you know, we could bump it up by another 30 students. Right now, our program is a year-long, and, you know, there are, what we're considering is a year-long, too long. Should we do semester and double our capacity, letting our CAPS students experience CAPS for a semester than, you know, bring in a whole new group of students? So we're very strong on quality over quantity right now, but we also know that there's a, a lot of students that we want to have impacted by, by CAPS.
Thank you.
With word of mouth, just among the students, are you already hearing of more students that want to be involved next year? Do you feel your enrollment numbers are going to go up just by what other students have seen, the experiences of these students, what they've brought to the-
Did anyone say that?
I've heard some negative things. People, like I said, people, some of the students don't really like the scale idea because you can't really achieve the 4.0, and that's not really envisioned by some students who base their potential off of their grades.
Okay.
So we're doing, on Thursday, we're doing recruiting, so trying to get some more. I mean, I always have positive things to say about CAPS, so I've only heard good things. So we're hoping to have more-
I was just curious, because sometimes when students hear or see what the current group's doing, that excites and brings up the numbers. Thank you.
I don't know if, if, if any of the other board members have had actual interaction with CAPS, with students in the CAPS program. I was fortunate to have that in, when I visited Bothwell's new ENT area, and also when my wife had, has had, had her, has had two knee replacements, and the last one during physical therapy, there was a CAPS student there. They were professional. They were professionally dressed. They were quiet. They were respectful. Their eyes were wide open, and we had, we had good discussions with them. They're sharp people. I was very pleased with that.
Any other questions for Mr. Wright?
What about, what about community engagement? Do you have other host sites that have reached out to you to say, we want more kids, or we want some kids? I know Mrs. Hartman wants to just hog everybody and keep them at Callis, but I, I didn't know how that looked. I know Ms. Harvey's at Maxion, right? So are we going to continue to stay at those locations? Are we going to branch out? Do you have interest? How's that looking right now?
Yeah. We are looking to increase some of our space that we have at some of our host sites, or we're exploring other potential ones. We do have lots of partners that have asked to host. You know, there was a competition between Maxion and Stanley Black and Decker. It's whether, you know, they all want the students there so they can have interactions with them. And we, we continue to expand on opportunities from, you know, businesses to nonprofits and different organizations. So there is, there is a lot of interest. You know, it's just, as, as we kind of take the next step here this spring of evaluating our current space.
Good luck with recruitment.
Thank you.
Yes. I particularly enjoyed reading the student feedback, both positive and negative, and the examples that you all brought this evening. I have a son who's in CAPS, so I get to hear from his perspective. And it's, it's such a good program for students who think outside the box and have different learning styles. And so I really appreciate the opportunities that have been given by our community and by the, the staff and faculty that are working with our students. So great job to the students tonight, too.
Anybody else? Thank you, all of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
The next item in the packet, I'm not going to go in great detail. It has to do with the educational opportunities for the Board of Education through MSBA. Some dates to kind of start looking at on your calendars and being aware of what's coming up with MSBA. And Dr. Fraley, the Lafayette Building?
Yes. I just wanted to give the board an, an update, that that site has not been forgotten. If you'll recollect, you approved a couple of different contracts, one to, after the demo, to obviously to redo the HVAC systems according to the plans that Hollis and Miller had, had drawn up for the district, as well as a plumbing contract to do the rough end plumbing for those set of plans. So we're approaching the end of that phase. I've been told that in the middle of February that will be completed. So I'll be working with Hollis and Miller to, after everything's been gutted out of there, there are just a few minor adjustments in measurement that will have to be allocated for in the current plans that they have, so the walls aren't off an inch or two here or there. So once they fine tune that, I would like to fine tune those drawings and then go back and rebuild that project once again and hopefully get a much more favorable outcome.
Any questions for Dr. Fraley?
The attendance reports.
Yes, you have your two attendance reports. They were 90/90, of course, and if you'll look district-wide, as of the 20th of December, which is Christmas break, we're at 87.07% of our students had a 90 or better attendance rate. And then, of course, our average daily attendance, as of December 20th in the first semester, we were at 92.92, including the loftest. We were at 93.18 K-12. So fingers crossed that we, we, those numbers hold or improve throughout the remainder of the year. I do know that we're fighting plenty of strep and RSV and influenza, so hopefully we can get through that not too unscathed.
Thank you. And building quarterly reports. Different format this time.
Yes, you have in your, or packet, links to the board, building quarterly reports for each of our site locations. It does have a little bit of a, a fresh look. Obviously, that is user-friendly. Looks a little bit different. Have different buildings. Elementary's pretty much the same, and secondary kind of, kind of had their little spin to things. So-
I really liked it. I liked it a lot.
I like them, too. Are they to be rolled out to the community eventually?
They, they would be available through the public link to the website.
Good.
Any questions for Dr. Fraley on that? Okay, if not, I will hear a motion to adjourn to closed executive session.
Move to adjourn the regular session meeting and notice is hereby given that the Board of Education of the Sudea School District Number 200, having duly voted to close its meeting as authorized by Section 610.021 RSMO subsection 1, legal actions, 3, hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting; 6, scholastic discipline or graduation; 13, personnel records; 14, records which are protected; 18, public safety or law enforcement; and 19, security system and structural plans by law. The Missouri statutes will conduct a closed meeting immediately following adjournment of regular session meeting on January 27, 2025, at Smith Cotton High School.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And the roll call vote.
Dr. Barfagan?
Aye.
Mr. Gardner?
Aye.
Mr. Groupie?
Aye.
Mr. Kempden?
Aye.
Mrs. Moon?
Aye.
Ms. Nichols?
Aye.
Ms. Schrader, both aye.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great week.